Travis.
It's it's.
Yes, great.
It's Travis.
Well, I mean.
I mean, you look at you look at the old Monticello Airport. I mean, you have like two campers with a house built in between the town and the other side. They're gonna park it on that. You know what I mean? It's just.
Yeah, and that's right there.
Yeah. I mean, that's pretty easy to get to.
So. Who's dropping the ball? Somebody.
The lean department, I guess. I mean, that's that's where this county stands right now.
Cause of what? Wages, pay rates, what, you know, insurance, um, you know. I hope we get some people here tonight. We just will go home.
So Mel was definitely gonna be here. Um.
How about uh?
We're just missing Mel and Cody. And Anne.
Cody and Anne.
Yeah. Anne usually pretty prompt.
And then the one good 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 guy, he's always on on the computer.
No longer.
Oh, isn't he? Okay, what do you do? Resign or is he coming here?
No, he never uh showed up to actual meeting, so he was dismissed.
Have you?
Have we replaced him yet? Maybe. This this lady right here in the middle, her name's Melissa.
Right there.
Mm-hmm. Great. This this is John Johnston.
Nice to meet you.
What is your name?
John Johnston.
Very nice to meet you. Where are you from?
Oberon, LaSalle.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So she might be joining us.
I will be, not tonight.
Okay.
There's a I work for Indian Health and they have to approve my appointment.
I see. Well, good. Where are you from?
Bluff.
Bluff?
Yeah, taking it tops.
Way down south.
Way down south.
Cool. That's neat.
Very nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
And the other ones are on the screen. Is that one of yours during?
What's that?
Are the other commissioners?
No.
No.
No. No, we're 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 anti-zoom.
Oh, nice to see everybody.
Yes, yep.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, I'm loud. You don't need to do that.
I don't talk, so I won't need mine. There's Anne.
Yep, we got one more.
Cody.
One more.
We got one more.
Mel dropped some stuff by earlier, so.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good to see you.
And Cody uses this here too.
I'll be next here. Where the people from Monticello jobs are. Here, don't lie there, you know.
I'm sure they're online. I don't know their names.
I don't either. Hope we have enough to have a meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Trips could go on.
Oh, Izzy.
Yeah, yeah, we're waiting for Cody.
And then is there a new bluff person?
What?
A new bluff person?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
This is her.
Oh, I'm sorry. And this. Oh, next.
She'll begin at the next meeting.
I see. Well, great. Nice to meet you. Yes, and what did you like to be called? Melissa. Melissa, okay.
Just so you guys online are aware, we do have to wait for a quorum, so we're waiting for another planning commissioner to show up, so. Hang tight. Traffic's bad today.
That's a bit of a slowdown. Roadwork. There's a bit of a slowdown with the roadwork.
Oh, is there? Yeah, I dodged it. I. Came over the back way to. Little Bisman Valley and over the gas plant back onto the highway. So that. Dodged all that crap.
Yep. It wasn't too bad.
Yeah. Wonder if we could call Cody and Mitch to see if he's on the way. Well, get got a number on him?
Mel did tell you that he was coming, right?
Who?
Mel?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He said, I noticed my advertisement in the paper.
Is he doing okay? I mean.
He had that surgery, he had a shoulder.
Oh, okay.
I mean, he didn't have a cast on or any or sling on or anything.
Okay.
Last meeting, he said that I won't be there today, cause I take care of my cat. So I'm like, alright, yeah. It's like it's pretty clear.
Right, yeah.
I heard what we're supposed to be doing, so. It's all quiet. Somebody needs to sing a song or something. Yeah, do something.
Nobody wants to hear me.
Only if you love yodel, yodel.
Just a little, I mean.
They do call like.
I was. For rent now. Traitor, well, probably. I'll never do that again.
And both of them?
Well, my god, it's just a mess and the beds are damn hard you can sleep on.
We didn't, we go stay at my place.
I can go next time.
Told you when you go down there, it's all right.
I am terrible. Thirteen. Hundred and fifty dollars for four nights. Yeah, pretty expensive.
Yeah, well, you picked the wrong climate here.
Well, it's small.
Owens, busy, busy season.
China wasn't able to make it today, so he's chairman of the meeting.
And and no parts, none of those were open, none of the machines were working, you know.
Hopefully, Mel mentioned yesterday that he's gonna be here.
Absolutely true.
You know, every time I go down.
Cody usually shows up.
For why I'm there. It's my fault, so I thought.
Yeah, 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 I take it in.
This last year or this year, I said, hey. He's like, for four, four days, three nights, and. Okay. Getting my kind of harness, okay? So the last three years, I've given you guys my card and you have not charged me one time. Huh. Well, we'll see if we can do it this time. I don't know. He's all, we're we're mainly after the big boats, I'm like, then why even take my card? Just give me a slip.
They didn't even speak English, now.
No.
It is totally ridiculous.
No, it just makes it nice. I just go down there, I pull the boat in, go park the truck, or park the trailer and drive my truck down to where I just walked down the lane.
Sure.
And that way, I just leave it in there. And that my chest.
Secure are they? Because I got a ton of fishing rods and fishing gear.
Used to be a little different. I mean, we I we pull the key out, that's all we do. I leave everything in it.
Nice.
I mean, I've never had anything that's.
Yeah, I got down there, there's some fishing rods and electric trolling motors. I mean, I have to be fairly confident that it's secure.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on, Cody, what's going on? Maybe we could. Plug Melissa in in the mother. Get this thing moving.
So the subdivision ordinance. That's county wide, is what Mac is applying to those subdivisions and on uh Mount Peel. Is that right?
Say that one more time.
And Mac's notes on some of these subdivisions for um. San Juan Estates or.
Mm-hmm.
He refers to. Um, certain sections when it comes to drainage or uh design standards.
It can't because this one supersedes. The the Spanish Valley ordinance supersedes the county ordinance.
But is there isn't, okay, so it would just be in residential, okay?
Yep.
Okay, just be in residential, that's what he's refer, that's what he was referencing.
Yeah. Which there is design standards. Very minimal and very drafty.
Well, and that's why in Mac's notes, it were very specific, like C section, blah blah, this, and that's what I'm thinking, it's the subdivision, the county subdivision.
Mac, what what ordinance were you referring to on some of these subdivisions in Spanish Valley?
So.
Anne's question, um, you are referring to certain ordinances in subdivision plots that are coming from Spanish Valley?
We only have one subdivision ordinance.
For the whole county?
Yes.
That's what you're applying.
So the subdivision ordinance, okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Tops on it, but the one I'm going off on preliminary plot is strictly the subdivision ordinance. And it lays it out step by step.
Yeah.
Supposed to be done.
Right, okay.
Yeah, if you have a question, we're looking for the ordinance and we'll look it up.
Well, I just wanna make sure. Which document?
Yeah, yeah, it's the subdivision ordinance, so that's. Tonight's discussion as well as some of the changes that needed to be made. A lot of times what we're seeing, and especially this crew that I dealt with. None of them paid the fee, none of them understood they needed a topo, and uh maintenance agreement, I'm like. Like, you guys, it's right, it's right here, hoping to, like, well, the surveyors are saying they've never done this, I'm like, well, it's different, different party. It's like, it's gotta be here.
Uh-huh. So what do you, what about old subdivisions that have been um finalized?
It's in the past.
Okay, what about fees and all of that? Are you gonna still try?
And I think those have caught up more on final plot, you know, to me, the if staff is looking at it, they should have paid the fee. And so in the future, I was like, we won't touch it until you pay the fee. And so. That way it just kinda guarantees that it's in the process. Check it off, and so Mitch is gonna go over a checklist. Um, a lot of counties have a checklist that they give to developers at the time of application. We have that on our conditional use permit, it's kind of takes you step by step. Same with subdivision, it's gotta be the same to where they can just check the box, yeah, we got this, and then also give staff. That ability, okay, you're you're missing this, we're not gonna go to this next level until you get this and this and this. And so typically, it's clear that I'm here preliminary. When a lot of this preliminary stuff can be handled by staff and then we're bringing it into final. Um, and then having you review it in case we missed anything. So this is an odd step to me, but we're bringing it in draft, letting you review it, telling telling you our issues with it. And then they go back to the ground board, fix everything, and we bring back a final. And so that's just two two cumbersome steps, and so to me, that's. We're gonna look at changing it to where it's just one step, the finding commission, which is a final.
A final.
And maybe we'll miss something on there and, hey, I'm worried about this, and then they go back and correct the final. And we have the votes approved instead of going through all this, cause I would hate that you go through all this process and, hey. That red rock is kind of that same concern as. We took them through all these steps and then they're about ready for approval, and then I call, hey, wait. And they're like, what, what do you mean? And so. We're hoping to avoid some of that, or we'll continue to come back to you. And we're working through these things, and then you get to find on it, oh, hey, wait, what about this one? You know, the staff had missed or wasn't looking at, and that's kind of what I worry about. It's just a lot of names.
Well, with balanced rock, though, we have a process to follow for those large.
We do.
Planned.
Well, and that same plan also goes for small developments, so tonight, I'm hoping you'll table this one, but it's an overlay. On small subdivision, I think three, four units, and so. It's like, well. All of that still applies, where they gotta have all their concepts of development, they gotta tell us how many parking stalls and. You know, all of that information, so it kind of even applies to the smaller ones.
Okay.
And so.
Even if it's just a overlay.
This is the small, yeah, cause it's that overlay district. It, when you go into the overlay district, you open that up to the overlay requirements.
Right.
And there they have to have all of those before you enter into the development agreement. And that's where Balance Rock is right now, they're in between that, it's like, I won't take a development agreement, tie all this. You know, cause that development agreement is telling us what you're gonna develop, but it's a forever thing. And so it's like, don't come before us until you have all that in there for your site plan.
Right, yeah.
And so, but it's a cost to developers, you know, to upfront a bunch of costs on a condition that they may not get approved.
Right.
But that process on overlay kind of allows for that, for them to further refine. Um, they're already in the overlay district, now they just gotta comply. And as long as they comply with everything in that ordinance, then you pass them into the development agreement. And so. Balance Rock, they weren't there. And so.
And so what's. Going on on that subdivision out by you? Where we've argued about their uh access. Be back on at the highway or.
Oh, we haven't heard of a word on that one for a while. That that one's kinda in limbo.
Dropped it.
That Curtis Wells one. They're gonna, I hear they're gonna go ahead and push forward on it, but um. One of the main money people in that has passed away in a car wreck, so I think that's kinda stalled it, so.
How about the camp? Or that they're building right there?
Saint Danes expansion, um, hopefully they are finished up in the next couple months. So they did a fifty-eight uh space extension, and then there's another. Um, eight little cabins, um, a bathhouse, and stuff like that, so.
Okay, and then all the access to it is.
Highway.
Back around the back way or is it off the highway?
Mm-hmm.
Highway entry.
Yep, about a million dollars.
All this dates go 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 into.
Yeah, I actually, I met with Reed today, cause he paid all his impact fees today.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, they're changing the entrance or something as well. I'm trying to get my hands on that fence.
Yeah.
That painted fence, a friend of mine did that.
Oh, okay.
It'd look good on Spanish Valley drive.
Yeah. Still cover the ants.
I need to go pull this tumbleweed off of the hill. They're outgrowing the ants.
Kind of a dance. Uh, with those little condos on Ivan's old property and and that hill right there.
But yeah, and the cut's the worst part about it right there, um, but but you know, the. The other one, they have a good turning lane, the only problem is, is it's only on the northbound traffic. Or the southbound traffic.
Yeah.
The northbound, we've, I've already seen one wrecked.
Yeah. The northbound is bad.
Do you know it? Do you know what?
Damn.
No, just by. I still don't know what they were, but he was just.
Cody's old enough to.
I don't have, do you have that somewhere?
I don't, I don't have anybody's.
I have Cody's. I tried to call him and it just went to voicemail.
Being embarrassing if we have to cancel all these people.
I know.
And I hope he gets.
Trent, Mel, or Cody, those are. One out of, well, one out of two is our only hope.
Yeah, and then. That's the next foul. Trent.
Kenny colored remotely?
No, not from his houseboat.
He doesn't have service on his boat.
What's he doing? Down on the hospital?
Yeah. And he's probably about seven drinks in right now, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make it extra fun.
Then they'll already be.
I got to houseboat Lake Powell last spring for the first time.
Oh, really?
It's perfect.
We love it down there.
Early, early season, so there wasn't anybody hardly out there, and they had an open bullfrog.
We we, if you go, if you go.
In the fall or in the spring?
Middle, it was spring.
Spring, early spring, like May or something.
It was spring, no, it wasn't spring, but it was. Yeah, sometimes, like it was, um. Did I, did I get that wrong? Was it fall or spring? But it was, it was, they had not. Un, uh, spring because they had winterized all of the tanks.
Oh.
So we had to use water we brought. And um, we couldn't use bleach, it was kind of, that was a hassle, couldn't, we didn't have running water.
The best time to go is in between the fourth of July and the twenty-fourth. And and I will tell you why, it's cause everybody goes on the fourth and the twenty-fourth, if you can pick. Nobody's down there between those, cause everybody is trying to go the fourth and the twenty-fourth.
It'll be nice.
And we went down this year, and uh, there was maybe. Between bullfrog holes of monkey, there may be fifty, sixty boats. And I mean, no way, it was so nice.
Yeah, it's been crowded the last four or five days.
And it will be.
Lots, lots.
Well, we've got, we've got reservations all the way through October on our place tonight.
Do you?
Yeah.
Do you have a houseboat?
Yeah, well, no, I've got uh two places over in Tikaboo.
Okay.
It's only a fifteen minute drive from there over to Bullfrog, so.
Happened to Tikaboo that, that's, they got a hotel.
The lodge, don't stay there.
Well, I know, we didn't, we didn't know better, so we stayed there, but we had dogs, they would let us take our dogs. But the carpet was.
And I know Tikaboo Lodging has a bunch of uh manufactured homes that they ran, but they're. And their dog, but.
Not very nice.
Yeah, John just ate a one.
Yeah. What a mess.
You're afraid to touch anything?
Beds were as hard as this table, man, miserable idea not getting on sleep.
Oh.
Not. Wasn't any fun.
The water's dropping, right?
Where's Ben?
See, yeah, I'm the one that built the. Bunch of that Tikaboo stuff back in the seventies.
Really?
Late seventies. Built built the grocery store in the long run, half, four dollar country.
Really?
Lots, lots of work down there.
So you know Darren Ledgy? He's the, he's got the manufactured home hauler in town that blew.
Oh, yeah.
His dad had a company, and he pretty well put every one of those single ones in there in the seventies. And most of them will retire, they will die there, because you can't move them, because they're older than seventy-eight, so.
You can move them to the dump, right?
Yep, exactly. But those people won't like them.
You can handle them, you your yard just get bigger and bigger down there.
Yeah.
More and more house roads.
Oh, yeah.
Old bones, a mess.
Yep.
It'd be a mess.
And people just earn pay there. What they do is on it.
Yeah. I don't understand, but that's what they do.
I sent a text, tried to call Cody. And I just gotta find Mel's. Shoot. This is bad.
Well, what about um? Um, Ed? Is he officially not, no longer?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's. History is.
Why can't she, why, why does it have to be till another month?
Yeah, I don't.
Cause they just.
She's. She's waiting for um. Approval. The people that she works. She works for Indian Health or something.
Oh. She, they have to give approval?
I guess. She just told me that.
Okay, so that would be.
She said how it can start.
Navajo healthcare system.
You know, in ten years, this is, this would be the second time.
Utah Navajo.
We we have had one time we all had to go home, we couldn't get a quorum.
There's a conflict.
But yes, it's done, I guess. Many can happen till then. Well. What do we do, boss? You're the chairman.
Well. I'm hoping Cody's driving, I hope that's where he's at.
Yeah.
Driving here really fast to get here. I don't know.
How are you, Brian?
How you doing?
Good.
Well, um, can I ask you guys some professional advice?
Any spots, because he's the one that really knows studies all this.
He might.
He's the, he really, really knows all of this, and this, I don't.
Well, we're trying to get a easement to hook onto the sewer water.
Mm-hmm.
Which we're, we have a neighbor back here in this, he's, this is the existing.
Yep, that's our main.
We're trying to add this little piece, about fifteen feet. They're concerned that this could impact their development future, uh, that they're a lot here.
I don't know how it would. We've already got a huge one that comes through here, this is our water main right here, that we, our PRV sits right over here on this corner.
Right. Cause we're trying to avoid having to dig up all of this landscaping, a lot of fencing. But um, I wasn't sure if he had a.
Um.
Value concern.
I've got water and sewer right here.
Are you sure on this side? Are you sure?
I gotta think.
Cause that's not our understanding.
You gotta give me a second to think, I've got. That water main, it's gotta go that way. It does.
It does.
Mm-hmm.
So I could go out there and look. And I'd see it, I would see it, right?
Well, you you might not see it, but um, that next intersection, what's that next?
Avila?
Cul-de-sac.
Avila?
Villa, Avila, whatever it is. I've got a water main that goes. Yeah.
Well, I know there's a hydrant on Avila.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there's one at the end and the one in the corner.
Fills up from there.
Yeah. Yep, there, yeah.
We were, I guess we were thinking we didn't wanna dig up. Is it on our side?
No, it'd be on Spanish Valley Drive, so you could just come right, right from the road over. Um, remind me tomorrow, call me or text me.
Okay.
And I'll look at the maps for certain.
Okay. Cause maybe this isn't necessary.
Right. Yeah, if we got water and sewer right out there on Spanish Valley Drive, there, all you gotta do is get with TJ and get in encroachment.
Okay. I think this neighbor thinks that this, that the easement is running like this.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
And not.
It's not, I know that one, yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, I just wanna get some clarity.
Then there's another one that runs right up between all those houses. We've got a big easement through there, a sewer.
This, right?
No, no, so the house right on the corner of East, uh, Coronado. Right behind it, we've got a sewer line that runs behind it and these houses.
Oh, really?
Picks these up. It's coming this way.
Behind their house, the blue house.
Yeah, the one right on the corner of East Coronado.
That's the yellow one?
Yeah.
You dot guy?
Okay, yeah, right behind his house, we got an easement right in between these houses. And that is, that is sewer, it, yeah, it's sewer, because all these, um. All the sewer lines come out the back of these houses. I remember locating these sewer lines down through here.
And, and they're buried together?
Mm-mm.
No.
No, they're separate.
Different height, depth?
Yeah, but they're still gonna be ten feet apart no matter where you're at.
So there's a sewer line.
No, that's water, that's a water main there.
Which one is?
This one.
Okay, then, what about sewer, sewer goes out here, this one might be the sewer.
Mm-hmm.
That, cause our sewer got hooked up.
In the back?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
To here. Somewhere like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I remember, as I come to do the inspection.
We didn't know.
Who, who was the contractor?
Uh, Noise.
Oh, Cole, that's right. I know. I have a call.
Yeah, but he can sure be unpaid. Take him a month, but he'll get it done.
He, he actually is working with Mark Eaton Cole. So now it's Mark Eaton Cole and plumbing.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Really, changing it into. Heat, c- 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 land plumbing. And we'll remember, down at the, add-on on the hospital. And Cole was, Cameron, I don't remember if you, you were there.
I think it was before.
But we had to go over because he took off on a trip with Alheaton Cruise. They opened the new emergency ward and stuff on the back of that hospital. It rained, Cole Noise had not tied in the roof drains.
Oh.
It was running right down cave and all the bar tile.
Oh.
Oh, my goodness, what a mess, I had to, I had to get away and help with all that, get it. Cleaned out, get the drains over and up there.
Oh, that's funny.
Poor old Cole.
Yeah.
Cole and Carolyn Noise.
Yeah, I worked with Carolyn at the school district.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we're gonna have a court enough. That little triangle that you're looking at there, what are you gonna do there?
Just a little, single, maybe eight hundred thousand square foot?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred?
Yeah.
Who's marked it out, but it feels big when you walk it.
Keep it under eight hundred, because that drops your ERUs down to point seven nine instead of one.
Okay.
So that saves you on impact bags.
Oh, yeah.
So eight hundred and less. Oh, have you? Did you explain to Dawn what it was? You wouldn't pay for your impacts on that until you do your business or your, uh, building permit, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're way far away. Yeah, just something a little.
This is what he dropped off earlier, and I don't know if that was a message that. He wasn't gonna be here, none of the staff knew.
He just stopped by and dropped this off?
Yeah, yeah, that's all he, that's all he provided. He was telling what was going on, I was out in a meeting and stuff. I don't know, so I can't get a hold of Cody, can't get a hold of Mel. So I think we just have to call it.
Yeah, this is a big agenda, and it's gonna, it's gonna get bigger.
Two months in a row, huh?
For Mel's?
No, for not having.
Did you check your email?
Can we hurry and?
Okay. How about? To avoid that, are you willing to have a?
I could probably do it by next Thursday.
Okay.
Can we just?
Make her part of it, right?
We, we could put it off for a week or two, I mean, it's up to you guys, I'm good with whatever.
So there are some critical ones that are on here.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Pretty important, actually.
Especially with the delay of everything on my calendar. Two weeks puts us to the twenty-eighth.
Um. Is next week look, not looking good?
Um. Seven days and so.
That gives us time to get.
I'm gonna have ten on a public notice.
Oh, okay.
So. So if we go two weeks. At least finalize, we can finalize everything then, Mitch, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, everybody, it looks like we're gonna have to cancel this meeting, I know, I appreciate you guys showing up, this is, it's awesome to have this type of engagement, I know there's some. Super important items on the agenda that were critical to have some comments with, but we're kind of stuck, um. If you don't have anybody that wants to be on the planning commission in that large position, please apply, because right now we don't have anybody, but you can kind of see the.
We'll be in now.
The turmoil, yeah, you can kind of see the turmoil and the difficulties with. Attendance that we're currently having, and so, next time we'll have Melissa, she'll be on board, the plan com- or the commissioners just approved her appointment to represent bluff. Um, so we'll have her for this meeting, um, and we'll work on the other. Physician that needs to be vacant, and so, I hope we help.
Did you already say what time the next meeting is?
Um, I, what do you recommend, um, same time?
Same time, six o'clock.
Next, a month from today or what is it?
No, two weeks.
Twenty, it'd be the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay.
Of September.
That's two weeks.
Yep.
Two weeks, yeah, yeah, sorry, I know that some of you have traveled far and apologize for that, I wish. I mean, I sent out, I sent out several emails, so it wasn't, you know, a lack of them not knowing.
Right.
That they should be hearing, so.
Is it worth calling Cody one more time?
What's that?
Is it worth calling Cody one more time?
So I tried him, his is going right to voicemail, I tried to text to him, um, Mel's is a home phone hotline, I called him, it went to voicemail. As well. They're all hunting.
No, no, yeah.
I don't know Mel, he was here earlier and dropped off this photo, and I don't know what that means, but.
Makes me feel bad.
Who represents LaSalle?
John.
That's me.
Is there a way we can just discuss the broad strokes of, of property proposal that we're, we're doing, that way we can see what we're putting. We're going into here in a week or two?
On the, the junction development? Um, you can either do that or send in public comments to me, you can send them to Mac McDonald. Um, so I am McDonald at San Juan County dot org, talk to him.
Yeah.
Relate to him, but if you kind of want all the planning commissioners to have that information, um, you can certainly send it in and I'll forward it to them. So, we've done that in the past, or online, there's a comment form, uh, that you can submit to this as well, and then I'll forward them. As well, so. We definitely want you to be heard, on there if you can't make the twenty-eighth, it's, it's pretty important. So, a couple avenues there. If you can't remember my email address, it's going online, at sanjuan county dot org, and so for county administrator, Mac McDonald. Since Shrum School marches, they named me after that big Mac hamburger. My middle initials are, and you know what that stands for.
Well, thank you, everybody, sorry.
You guys, I feel real bad, how are you, Mike? Good.
For those of you that are online.
She's, she's got more problems than anybody I ever.
We did discuss.
She's got sicknesses and illnesses that I never heard. And I don't know what is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Every week it's something else. Oh, yeah, it works, but she normally, she has a phone that. I don't know why, but she only gets so many texts a month, I don't know why she don't get.
Did you guys online hear me on that? I don't know if you've heard, I think my microphone was turned off. But if you are online, we are canceling the meeting because of the lack of a quorum, um, we've, we'll reschedule. Today's meeting and all today's items for the twenty-eighth of September, we want to try to get everything in this month. Um, so kind of a quick two-week delay right there, but. I appreciate your attendance, I appreciate your interest, but know that without a quorum, we're stuck with not even being able to have the discussions. Um, if you cannot make that meeting and you're wanting to make a, a comment, um. To the commissioners, to the planning commission, uh, you can either do that online through sanjuan county dot org. Or you can email me at M McDonald at sanjuan county dot org. So a couple different avenues if you're unable to make that meeting, but do apologize, um, but without a quorum, we're kind of stuck. They tell me that this is the second time this has happened in ten years, and so. Sorry.
As of right now, this position. So we're looking for a letter of interest at large.
Yep.
Which this would not be the first time.
Sorry, I was like. I know.
And you're official on our side, and so, but I know that you don't want to jeopardize that.
Sorry, sorry, this is the first time that's been canceled.
Okay, and you'll have a little bit more time to study.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions about anything.
You know what, I.
Okay, yeah, oh, yeah, I am here for you, and so, feel free to reach out, on anything on the packet, if you just like, explain what this is.
And the Spanish Valley.
You wanna come in, we can schedule a meeting and just take an hour block and just go through each one.
I represent all the services.
Okay, yeah, alright, thank you, sorry about that. Hey. Oh, hey, Mike, I absolutely, I'm like, okay, alright. Appreciate everything on there, and so, many interesting discussion. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's good that you're accessible.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's crazy, times like this, you're like, oh, so frustrating, because you put in all this massive amount of work behind the scenes to get it. You do all the research and the study for.
I, I worked, and it's like, running.
Yes, yes.
You better ask Mac on that one, cause.
Yeah.
The chair would be able to tell you, yes. Well, sitting now, it's me, it's Trent, it's a killer butt.
Anybody in the county can apply no matter where you live, typically, we have, we have it segmented, you know, like bluff, so Melissa. She's filling the bluff position, she lives in bluff. She's replacing Ed Dobson. Um, he would show up on the phone, but it's a requirement that you impression the person.
Yes.
He hasn't showed up since he was appointed, and so, he's like, well, I'll make it up in the future, I'm like, with the amount of months in the year, so we got. Possibly three more meetings, like you would still not be down fifty percent a year for sure.
Yeah. So how, what's, what is the process?
Just email me a letter of interest.
Yeah.
Who, do you guys vote on it, or?
The, if there's enough candidates, we hold the interviews, and then just go through the interview and select from there.
What are you looking for at this trailer?
Uh, listen.
What are you looking for?
Um, Ian.
Yeah, they're trying to put.
In our bylaws, and our bylaws are online as well, and the ordinance that we approve. In there, it has kind of a carve-out if you have experience in a particular engineering, construction development, and it kind of puts you at a higher level. Do you have to be, uh, you do have to be a registered voter of San Juan County. And then if you don't meet those qualifying points, you still apply, and they'll still consider it, you just, you don't score as high as the others. Without having that experience. Okay. Yeah, put it in.
Are you talking about Jamie's wife?
We're only eight percent private, and so.
Oh. Okay.
Susan, Susan, LaSalle, LaSalle's kind of, you're seeing a lot of enrollment on the Airbnb side of it, type of. You know, cabin retreats, things like that, um, not, you know, other than that grocery store is out of LaSalle Junction now, kind of opening that. That little one on the corner, so.
Cole.
Oh, I agree.
Cole.
I agree, so we'll see how this grocery store does. Yeah.
Well, and I'm not worried about this, so.
Yeah.
I were using.
Yeah, another cleanup.
Another wonderful trip.
I think he's just ranting it. But there is an old underground leaking storage tank that they did, um, so it used to be.
Yes.
Kind of one of those oil field situations where they created a reservoir and kind of.
Yep, yep.
Air out.
Which is awesome.
And everything so it can evaporate.
Yeah, I told you about that, it kind of did work for a guy.
So, yeah, and then he's out there like you said, he's building that.
Yeah, yeah.
He's off-road, man, and then he's got a guy, it's affordable housing, the guy, that guy back was affordable housing. And, yeah, he's got.
Yeah, those little cabins.
Why do you tear, tear down the trailer there, that's what I'm trying to figure out, that was a nice.
Yeah, that was. Yeah, for us, we were glad that it's no longer the. Ever. That didn't, that didn't vote too well. I don't know, it's. It's all within the zoning, it allows for it, so it's like, alright. That is.
Yeah, and you, and you know what's going on before it gets to you, so.
That truck stop would be perfect.
Cabin, short-term rental cabins.
Yeah, I'd buy it just for a parking lot, the state of, the state is really looking at these parking lots just to see, you know. If the truckers, they're overloading into the rest jobs, and they're overloading the truck stops that they need just to park. You know, the rest of the facilities that they can pull into.
So would that be on private on state land?
State land, hopefully, but to accommodate it and keep the traffic going through this area, you know, if they're not providing services.
And that's the thing, is, is you're, you're, as an administrator, your planning zone, you should have this check with them. Do you meet this criteria, you know, so on so forth?
They're coming into the community there, like a Wilson Arch. Yeah, yeah, super big concern.
Cause they can only be so many hours on the road.
Yeah, eight hours, and so you're coming from Texas.
Yeah, the state's got so much money, man.
They do, I agree, we're working on. We're working for them, yeah, go ahead.